Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, July 27, 2021. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the Central Jew Room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. Today, we have with us again Dr. Bill Miller, who has been arranging for the past almost two and a half years, our speaker, to give us an invocation every morning to start this thing off. And today, we're proud to have from the St. Francis Cabrini Catholic Church here, Deacon Craig McAllister. Father?
Thank you. Like I told you earlier, in my tradition, Catholic tradition, we start all our prayers off in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for the many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless and glorious nature. In the Scripture, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our county commissioners, for the various levels of county offices, and in particular, for this assembled Commissioners Court. I am asking you that you would graciously grant them the wisdom to govern amidst the conflicts, conflicting interests, and issues of our time, a sense of the welfare and the true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved Hood County. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Would you all join me in our pledge allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. I would like to remind all of the citizens that are attending today that if you want to speak on any of the agenda items, that Sheriff Deeds has a public participation form that you are requested to fill out, and the sheriff will then hand them to Katie Lang, our county clerk, and she will number them and hand them up to me. And at the appropriate time, we will call you to speak on the number that you would like to speak. Our next item is the special presentation about the Texas County and District Retirement System. Ms. Welborn, do you have somebody?
Yes, I do. Thank you. We have Erica Agary here today from TCDRS, and she's going to do an overview of our current retirement plan.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for having me. I have...
Thank you.
Good morning again, and thank you for having me. It's always a pleasure to visit Granbury and visit Hood County. And I'm very excited to say that we completed our conference last week in a virtual setting, and we were proud to highlight the incredibly successful onboarding experience of Hood County employees. And we were able to ask Melissa Welborn to join us and got incredible feedback. And the lessons learned on how to successfully onboard employees comes from this very county. So, thank you very much. I'm very proud to honor you all and Melissa for that regard. So, thank you. So, to begin, I'd like to review a few slides with you. It's very important that annually, I provide an update to TCDRS. I'm going to be using the screen here, but you'll also have a copy of that presentation in your packet. And I always like to begin with really a snapshot of what we look like today. We are more than 800 employers strong. In fact, mid-year, I think we're already at 830 because we have districts that join us each month. And we have 37 billion in assets, and as a system, 87% funded. And our 35-year return, as you can see, is 8.5%. That's over the long haul. So, as you're familiar with, we were created by the Texas Legislature, but we are not funded by the state of Texas. We fund ourselves. And the employers, Hood County, all of the counties and districts in our system, fund their matching portion. And employees fund their own deposits. So, because we receive no funding from the state of Texas, we diligently manage our portfolio and all of the assets that we have as a self-funded system. And obviously, we are managed by an independent nine-member board appointed by our governor and approved by the State Senate. In my work, and I'm sure you're familiar as I've visited you before, I'm often asked to explain why TCDRS is different from other pension systems. And there are three very unique characteristics that keep us different from even systems in our own state and nationwide. And to review them very briefly, every employee is saving for their own retirement throughout their career. So, every time they get paid, a portion of their income goes into their own account. While that's happening over the course of their career, Hood County is saving for their match. And we are evaluating the plan every year to give you the cost to fund that match, whatever benefit levels you've offered. So, over the course of the career, while that savings base is taking place, you are responsibly funding your portion. And finally, the reason I'm invited to give you updates is because the decision-makers of this county can adjust benefit levels and make any decision that you need that would match your workforce need and budget. And because you have that local control and flexibility, the plan then belongs to you. And it is our job to manage it with the data and the detail so that you can make the best decisions for Hood County. And these reasons are why TCDRS is not in the news. This is why we're not like the other systems. This is why we are so well-funded, because of the local control, the responsible funding, and the fact that this begins from day one of the saving of their plan. Specifically for Hood County, 7% is what the employee deposit is. So, when your employees get paid, 7% goes into their own TCDRS account for themselves. Now, over the course of their career, there's an interest level that's set by the state statute, and it's a 7% earnings. So, while they're working here, their money is earning 7% interest each year, and that interest is compound. So, if you put in a good 15 years, your interest starts growing even faster than your deposits. Now, the match is what is offered by this county, and the caveat is they must be eligible to retire. They have to hit an eligibility rule. We offer three. As long as they hit one, they are eligible. And when they become eligible, they earn a 250% match for life, but it must be taken as a lifetime pension. And I say that because even though people are eligible, oftentimes, they still want to withdraw their funds, and they have the right to do that. It's their money, but they don't get the match. If you withdraw your money, the match stays with Hood County. You only get the matching portion if you take it in a lifetime pension for the rest of your life, not in a withdrawal. I always like to provide this county with a snapshot. It's very important. So, if you look at ZIP codes in this county, you'll see the dollar amount that we paid out in benefits in 2020. And it's very healthy for us to always look at these numbers because every four years, we provide you with an economic impact study that we do statewide, and we find that 96% of retirees are staying in Texas. So, what that means is when you're paying out this dollar amount to your retirees, 96% of that is then coming back to your local economy, and it's staying in our great state. And retirees are living here, spending their retirement income in your local neighborhoods. This is just a snapshot. I mentioned that we have three rules in order to ever become eligible and retire. And again, you don't need to hit all three, just one. So, if you are age 60 and you are vested, you can retire. Or if you hit the rule of 75, which means we add your age plus your years of service, you are eligible. And the final hurrah is if you have 20 years of service. Now, those don't have to be consecutive, as long as they're 20 years. That's because oftentimes, employees will work somewhere, and they might leave, but they might return. And they never lose their time. Even if they withdrew their funds, their time is not lost. So, the 20 years of service at any age, non-consecutive or consecutive if they stayed, will allow them to reach eligibility. The last benefit that you'll see on the screen is called Group Term Life. That is an optional life insurance that Hood County chooses to offer. At any point in time, it can be removed, but it's a life insurance that's provided to your active employees. It's very affordable. It's been priced against the market, and it's very affordable. And it offers your active employees beneficiary a one-time check for their annual earnings if their loved one should pass away. So, if your member passes away, their beneficiary receives a check for one times their annual earnings. So, for the cost, it's a great life option, and you can certainly leave it or change it at any point in time. This is a very popular question I get. People are curious about the benefit levels they provide, and they want to know if their members put in a certain amount of time, how much of their income are they replacing in retirement? So, for a 20-year career at Hood County, once a member retires, this benefit level is placing about 58% of their income in retirement. We always encourage our members to have a varied plan, you know, to have any additional retirements, investments if possible. You know, of course, many of our counties do pay into Social Security, but it's very important that they look across the spectrum and not just depend on TCD. However, it will be a considerable amount of their retirement income. I did mention that we are not funded by the state of Texas. So, in an image form, if I were to pay a benefit dollar to a retiree, where then does that money come from? Of every benefit dollar paid, 74 cents is from our investment earnings, our diversified portfolio that I'll mention in a moment. 15 cents is from our counties and districts that provide a match, and 11 cents is from the members saving for their retirement that they'll receive one day. This is how we fund our plan. Our portfolio is diverse across and within asset classes. This is public information. We have designed, well, I shouldn't say "we," I'm not a part of that brilliant team, the investment managers have designed a portion of our website dedicated to real-time results and historical data. At any point in time, you can click on an asset class and see who the investment managers are, what they've done, what they're doing today, and what we're invested in. We set our target allocation that's reviewed by our Board of Trustees each year, and it's managed by an external and internal investment team. It's also important that I provide you with our history. So, you'll notice our fund is in blue, and you'll see our total fund markers against benchmarks. And we have our 2020 return. We closed the year at 10.5, and that is one of the few times where we didn't exceed our benchmark. And that was because for last year, we actually used more cash. When everything hit with COVID in mid-year, we wanted to be able to hold on to cash just in case of anything might have happened. Had we not done that, we would have exceeded the benchmark. But that was a very strategic management call from our operating managers that manage the portfolio as they do. But you'll see, we still exceeded our target at 10.5. This is the actual performance of the portfolio. It's very important that we always update our decision-makers of what these numbers are. You'll notice there's a gray band, and that's intentional. That's our risk tolerance. There is a tolerance plus and minus of our long-term goal that we are willing to take when it comes to our portfolio, as diverse as it is. And you'll notice that other than the recession of '08 and the subsequent recovery of '09, the portfolio has performed as it's supposed to within that risk tolerance. For many years, and I would say, I think if I'm not mistaken, it's about 36, it's more than 30 years, our long-term investment goal for that portfolio has been 8%. And that's something that you might remember in my previous visits to your county as I talk about our long-term goal. In a document that I will review in a moment, on page one, there's a special note to decision-makers. We are looking at future forecasts because that is what our managers must do. Not only can they take history into account, but they absolutely must forecast what might happen. And because returns and rates are expected to remain below historical norms, our investment managers adjusted our long-term goal, our long-term return assumption of 8% that stood 36 years to 7.5. They lowered it just a little because that's what was required of our portfolio. It's very important that we keep in sync our assumptions with our expectations so that it continued to produce as powerful results as it can, and it's the strongest by its design. And so, we did reduce it to a 7.5 because of the forecasts showing that across asset classes, they will be decreased for some time. Bringing your specific numbers to the table, you'll see that there are reasons that your rate changes each year. And this year in particular was the first time you probably saw a jump that you hadn't seen in several years, and that's because we adjusted our investment return assumption that I just explained. It was at 8% for many years, and we moved it to 7.5. When that change occurred, the normal cost of all of the plans, all of the counties and districts in TCDRS, the normal cost went up for everybody just a little bit for this year. Because if TCDRS is going to predict that we might make, not might make, the same that we used to, then employer costs go up just a little bit to keep it in balance. Now, with that decision, you might remember, 8% stood the test of time for 36 years, and so we're hoping that 7.5 was the ideal move strategically and will stand for many years to come. But that is the decision and the expertise of our investment manager team. And when they looked at future forecasts, this was the best thing for the portfolio as they manage it day in and day out. Now, you'll notice a negative sign on the screen. Investment returns, negative .02, that's actually a positive experience. An elected rate lump sum, negative .09, that's a positive. Now, that must be financial speak. I don't know why you'd put a negative sign in a positive experience, but that's the way it works. And why is that positive for you all? Because I've shown you the history. We do have gains in the pipeline. We closed our year at 10.5 last year, so we have gains to pass off to you. You've also had very smart strategy happen here at Hood County. For five years, this county has paid an additional lump sum. And in a moment, I'm going to explain specifically why that's been so strategic for you. So, that positive experience helps offset any kind of change or any kind of impact. This year, the impact to adjust the investment return assumption did cost your plan, your normal cost, to go up a little bit, but you had some positive gains with your elected rate, with, excuse me, your additional lump sums and the investment returns. There are other counties and districts who noticed a considerable change, 5% plus, whereas yours remained at 2.83 because of the decisions you've been making, particularly the last five years. And I'll show you that in a moment. The presentation itself will close with this slide. This is just our contact information. I'd like to ask you if you, for a moment, if you would look on the document that says "special note regarding plan assessments." It's in your folders today. And if you will for me, you'll notice that the very first page, it's just a review of what I've explained to you. I wish we could speak in everybody's court, but we don't have the ability to do that. So, when I'm invited, I can explain it in more detail. But for everyone else, we do have this note that was written to explain that we adjusted the investment return assumption, that it did increase costs for this one plan year, and that what we did to offset a higher cost, we used a portion of our system reserves, and we re-amortized liabilities over a closed 20-year period. So, that helped mitigate an even higher increase when we did that. Now, this document is also what we provide Hood County every year. It's called a plan assessment, and this assessment is what tells Hood County what is due for the coming year. It's usually mid-year that I'm invited to speak, but it's all year that I talk to Becky and Melissa. We talk from April through December. They are very, very excellent about keeping in touch with me and asking questions and discussing strategy and what is best for Hood County. So, the decision to make any kind of additional lump sums or to make any plan changes isn't until December. And Becky and I have already been talking at length about a strategy for Hood County with another additional lump sum she plans to pay. Now, that brings me to my last and probably the most important document that you're curious about, and that's your history. I do bring a copy when I come every year. It's the Hood County Plan History because this tells you exactly what's been taking place since you all joined our system in 1984. I mentioned earlier that I was going to point specifically as to the strategy that's been implemented, and this is why you'll find it's been very strategic. On page two, you'll notice a series of eight colas that were passed from the years of 2001 to 2008. Those are colas that are provided to retirees, cost of living adjustments that are given to retirees who are already receiving a TCDRS pension. So, that is absolutely a great opportunity, especially for the retirees. However, there wasn't a pre-funded effort at that time from 2001 to 2008. Those colas weren't paid in advance. They were simply amortized. And when they're amortized, they're rolled into your rate. So, you will notice on the subsequent page that your cost would go up just a little bit over time because you're paying off these colas over time. Now, while that happened, a match increased, a match, the employer match went from 160% to 185% in 2008. So, you did increase your match. And then you'll turn to page one for me. You'll see that there are three more colas that were passed, one in 2013, one in 2017 and '20. But here's where the brilliant strategy came into play. Hood County started making lump sum payments, so you were funding those colas. You were paying for past colas, and you were paying for any future colas. And when you pre-fund them, they're not amortized into your rate. Now, I will say though, that it does take, each cola takes 15 years in a standard amortization cycle. So, for those eight colas, you're looking at 15 years each. That's a while to pay. But the brilliance of Hood County is that a large lump sum was paid in 2011, again in 2012, and then from 2017 on. So, that activity to pay down those past colas has been taking place as well as funding new colas. And so, rather than it taking 15 years for your new ones, those are being funded. And what Becky has done is she's asked me, what are the costs of them? What can I fund in advance so that you're paying things upfront and it's not being amortized like it was in the past? That's the strategy that's taking place. And so, not only did you offer these benefits, but you had a minimal impact because of the assets you built over time. There were also two other plan changes. Your match increased from 185 to 200 and from 200 to 250. But again, with those additional lump sums, that all helps the assets and to keep those liabilities much lower than if they weren't pre-funded at all. This is an example of what we speak to our counties and districts statewide. We talk to them about pre-funding colas, pre-funding benefits, and to create a habit of that because then you're always building assets faster than liabilities. So, this is actually an example that we use of the strategy that can be implemented. Even though it wasn't in the past, that's fine. It's happening now. And Becky's very diligent about saying, Erica, let's talk about what funds we have available, how it's going to pay down my liabilities, when I need to pay it, what's the deadline? And there's communication that we have year-round about all of this and how it needs to get paid. And Melissa and I will talk through the plan documents and what I need to present so that you're very well aware of the status of the plan, options, what's happened in the past, and what you can do future forward. And so, as I close, the timeline is that every April, re-release what your costs will be. And by December 15th is when the due date is for any plan change or any payment. So, Melissa, Becky, and I are very much on top of that deadline so we can talk through the process if Hood County chooses to make a plan change or an additional payment. But most importantly is the history of understanding how costs are increased, but how, you know, strategy really comes to play, particularly in years when we have to make an adjustment like the investment return assumption or maybe an adverse year like 2008. Your rate avoids a major spike because those assets are being built over time. So, at this point, I'd like to pause and open myself for questions on any of the documents I've discussed today.
Sounds like good news to me.
Very good news. Oh, another good news, Judge. You all are one of the highest-funded counties. When we ask outside rating agencies, their opinion, not even ours, but Fitch and S&amp;P and the outside rating agencies say that you're healthy if you're 80% funded and higher, particularly for permanent entities. And this county is 94.4 and growing. You've been in the high 90s for years. So, what does that mean? When we travel the state and we talk about well-funded counties, your name is right on that list because of your strategy, and you're in excellent, you're in excellent condition. So, not beyond good, very well-funded is what we like to call it. So, yes, lots of good news.
Well, Ms. Kidd constantly reminds me that she treats Hood County's monies like her own. I think that she's very parsimonious, and so I think we all owe Ms. Kidd a big round of applause for doing that for us. Very good presentation. Does anybody have any questions? Any comments?
Very good presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me. This is one of my favorite towns, and I like it so much, I'm actually staying an evening to enjoy it. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you very much, Erica. Very much. And thank you, by the way, for the kind words you said about Ms. Melissa Welborn too. She really works well. The three of you work well together, and I really love to see that.
It was a pleasure to brag about her in Hood County. So, thank you.
Right. Thank you, Melissa Welborn too. Okay. Now, that brings us to our service awards. You've got three, do you not, Ms. Welborn? First, we have Ms. Lisa Umphris. Ms. Umphris, are you here? Looky her. This is a lady that can probably do most everything. She can work any kind of computer system in the county here. Anyway, so you got an award?
Yes, sir.
Is it mine? Is it in here?
It's right here.
Oh, it's right there?
The award's here.
Oh.
Yes. And Judge Gillum is here to present it to Lisa.
Judge Gillum, are you going to hand that to your...
Yes, my pleasure. This is the heart and soul of JP Office Four. And because our office does so well, it's because of Lisa and Denise and Lynn as well. But I'm very privileged and behind, as we all know, every good man is an outstanding woman. And it's their world. We just live in it. And I thank you very much for your dedication and your loyalty and always above and beyond. And your pen, right there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. The next service award is a very special service award for, in fact, the next two. 25 years. Now, that's a pretty good milestone there. Gloria Byrd. May I come down there with Gloria Byrd too? I like to say this, is that I've known Gloria Byrd for 35 years.
There you go. I want to be down there. Yeah. As you know, Gloria, y'all are kind of behind the scenes on everything. You put in 25 years. It's a long time, a lot of work. I appreciate it, and I'm sure everybody up here appreciates it. You do a good job, and thank you very much. I'm going to get one there.
Gloria's father-in-law only worked 67 years on the black ranch out there on Highway Four. So, she has a good work ethic, I can tell you that. And she, it tells it on everything that she does. And I know her family very, very well. Thank you very much for all your years of service. You're very special. You're very special. Next, we have another 25-year service award, and that's Ms. Linda Pierce. Ms. Berry's up here. Congratulations to you, Ms. Pierce.
Thank you. We can't thank Linda enough. He, she takes care of everything in the department. She does everything. She runs the community service crew that takes care of the grounds. And what most of you don't know is she has one more year with Hood County that she doesn't even get credit for because she did an internship at juvenile probation before she got her job here. So anyway, I can't thank her enough. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Welborn. Thank you, ladies, for all your work. Next, we have the consent agenda. Does any of the commissioners wish to pull anything off the consent agenda or have any comments regarding the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion?
Judge, I move to approve the consent agenda.
A motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the agenda. Second has been made by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Okay, that brings us now. There's no road operations, am I right, Mr. Donald Lenny? Okay, good to see you, though, sir. Okay. So that brings us to development. Mr. Clint Head.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Ms. Head.
First item I have today is a final plat of Mayberry Edition Lot 1 Block 1. The property is located at 3850 Membrano Highway in Granbury, Texas. The final plat will be a 2.072 acres lot out of the Wary Adams Survey Abstract Number One. Final plat is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct Two and currently has a well in septic, but the house has been torn down and the owner plans to be served by a mud water and sewer. There are no streets to be dedicated with this final plat. Staff has reviewed this final plat. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the final plat of Mayberry Edition Lot 1 Block 1 as presented.
Okay. Is there an appropriate motion?
Judge, I move that we approve the final plat of Mayberry Edition Lot 1 Block 1 in Precinct Two.
Second. Our motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the final plat of the Mayberry Edition Lot 1 Block 1 in Precinct Two. Second. Our motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the final plat of the Mayberry Edition Lot 1 Block 1, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero.
The next item, we have a public hearing to discuss the replat of Orchards on the Brazos Lot 1R in Precinct Two.
Okay. This time, the Commissioners' Court will convene into a public hearing. Please proceed.
This replat is the combining of lots one and two of the Orchards on the Brazos, creating a 10.154 acres lot called Lot 1R. The property is located within the Water Quality District in Precinct Two and is served by public water and will be served by an onsite wastewater system. Staff has reviewed this replat. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the replat of the Orchards on the Brazos Lot 1R as presented.
Any further comment or discussion? If not, we reconvene back into the Commissioners' Court. Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the replat of the Orchards on the Brazos Lot 1R.
Second.
Second.
Hi, we had a tie here. I guess tie goes to the person on the right here. So we got a motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the replat of the Orchards on the Brazos Lot 1R, and second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero.
We have another public hearing to discuss the variance request of Section 1, the Development Permit Regulation, Section 5.4, Water Quality District Land Use Standards, Section B, Subsection B 2.
Okay, we're going to convene now into a public hearing to discuss the variance. Please proceed.
The applicant is requesting this variance, and if approved, will later submit a replat that will be replating two lots that will be reducing the size of one lot of an existing, reducing size of one of an existing lot from 0.695 of an acre to .5 of an acre, and increasing an adjoining lot from 0.538 of an acre to .733 of an acre. The size of the lots in this subdivision are grandfathered as they currently are. However, if a replat is submitted that is not combining the two lots and increasing the size of the original platted lots, a variance is needed to reduce the size of the lots from the original size and what the Development Permit Regulations allow for the Water Quality District. Technically, it's creating a new lot of record and is required to meet the current regulations. The residential density limitations within the Water Quality District requires a maximum residential density where centralized water systems are provided, be one dwelling unit per gross acre. There is an existing house on the lot the applicant wishes to make smaller. In the past, development has allowed the adjustment of a lot line to correct for an encroachment as long as the property maintained the same area and did not reduce the area from the original platted lot. This is not being done to correct the encroachment and is reducing the original area and requires the court to approve a variance. The applicant chose to request the variance prior to submitting the replat because if the replat was denied, the variance is not approved, the fees are non-refundable.
So what is your recommendation, to approve or not approve?
It's against the regulations.
Against regulations? Okay. Any further discussion about item number C? Okay, we're going to convene back into the Commissioners' Court. And do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'm going to make a motion to table this until the owner calls me and comes and talks to me about this. So I'll make a motion to table.
Make a motion. Get it made by.
To table 2C.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Okay. You still with us, Mr. Head?
Yep. The next item I'd like to pull.
Okay. Pull D.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that brings us.
Then it brings us to E.
Yes, sir.
Discuss and consider the preliminary plat of South Bend Edition Lots 1 through 55, Precinct Three.
Yes. We have a concept plan of South Bend Edition that was approved on November 24, 2020, Commissioners' Court. And the name at the time of the concept plan was South Bank. The developer has now chosen the name of South Bend Edition. This property is located at 6316 G Road, Granbury, Texas. The gross site area for this concept plan is 79.142 of the GT Walter Survey Abstract Number 594 and a Nancy Dotson Survey Abstract Number 151, and proposes to create 53 single-family lots, one HOA lot and one gas well lot. This preliminary plat is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct Three and will be served by a mud water and onsite sewage facilities. The preliminary plat proposes to construct approximately 5,308 linear feet of public six-inch concrete streets. There are no variance requests associated with this concept plan. Our comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Motion.
I'm going to make a motion.
Approve it.
Second.
Motion.
Made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the South Bend Edition Lots 1 through 55, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero.
Development, the next item, development would like the court to discuss and consider waiving applications fees for the site development plan, submittal for Acton, Decardover Bend, Fire Department Site Development Plan that they're wanting to submit in Precinct Three. The money for the fee would come out of money that would be better suited to helping serve the Fire Department.
What's your recommendation? Waive or not waive?
Where is? We're going to pay for it either way. In my opinion, we're going to give it back to them, so.
Where is the location?
Carla Drive, is that what it's called? It's right there at Port Ridgely.
Go, Amber, not somebody.
Other discussion about it? So it's taken from one hand, given back to the other? Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we waive the application fees for the site development plan, submittal for Acton, Decardover Fire Department Site Development Plan.
I'll second.
It was been made by Commissioner Wilson to waive the application fees for the site development plan for the Acton, Decardover Bend Fire Department Site Development Plan, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Head, thank you very much. We'll start charging you overtime here. Ms. Kidd.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Wide and high on a crescent of praise from everybody here. I hope you can keep up the good work here this morning.
I plan on it, sir.
Okay.
We have a long list of line item transfers. The first one is from Constable Precinct Two. I don't believe he is here. He has allowed Chad Jordan to sign this in his absence, and I don't believe Chad Jordan is here. So the first one is moving money from supplies for dues, books, and subscriptions, and this is to cover the monthly trans-union invoices for the remainder of the year. Do you want to do these one at a time or all at once? Because there are a lot of them. My suggestion would be to hear all of them and then approve them, sir.
That's a good suggestion.
Yeah, I think we hear all of them because there are really not that much money on all of them. And in looking at all of them, all of them are pretty well self-explanatory and probably necessary.
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
So that's the first one. The second one I have is from Chad Jordan for ammunition increase. That's $1,027. The third one I have from Jay Riley. Jay?
Yes.
If they're, if the department head is here, I would like for them to explain it because that's why we put them separate, so the department head, not the auditor, would explain these.
You want $100 for uniforms, Mr.?
Yes, sir, it's for shirts. The guys wear t-shirts in the summer, it's hot. We wore the other ones out. And so I'd like to, we didn't use our education in travel this year due to COVID, so we moved that, $100 of that up to increased uniforms, which brings us to number four.
You have a second one.
I've got another one up there.
Next page, Drew.
Okay, so that brings me to landscaping. We spent a ton of money on landscaping this year. It's been a tough year. Plus, we froze and lost bushes, and we've had a lot more trees, a lot more mowing, a lot more weed killing and things like that. So I took the remainder of that travel and would like to put it over in landscaping so I can go ahead and complete that for the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Riley.
Item number five is the district attorney. I don't believe Ryan is here. Oh, good, he's here. Yay. I was just going to make something up.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. This line item transfer is to transfer money from my investigation and expert testimony line items to the drug and DNA testing. This is for DNA testing that was performed on victims of child abuse by the Tarrant County Medical Examiner's Office.
I think that's all we need to hear about that. That's, that's good. You got another one there, too, don't you?
Yes, sir, the same thing.
Yep, same thing. Okay. I think you'd need that because it's, they're so slow in getting that back. This is going to speed things up, and it's necessary, isn't it?
Well, this is, that's for the drug testing, Judge, for next year's budget. This is for DNA testing from the Medical Examiner's Office. We're actually going to be transitioning to the state lab for these DNA tests because they're going to be a lot cheaper, if not free. And so I anticipate having to come to the Commissioners' Court to request these line item transfers less going forward, so.
Good. Okay. Have any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sincon.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay.
The next one's from the district judge. I know he's in court, so his is, because between Judge Walton retiring and Judge Buffkin coming in, we had to use visiting judges, and that's what this is for.
Okay, that's pretty self-explanatory. Any questions? Okay, next.
The next is from the Elections Administrator.
Okay.
Good morning to everybody. I'm asking that $100 be moved from the dues, books, and subscriptions down to education and travel so that I can have my new assistant join TAEA, which is a Texas Association of Elections Administrators.
Good. Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Carew. Okay, next.
Next is the sheriff.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. What this is, the 450 for increased contract services, this is to pay the shredding bill from the company's, Iron Mountain. It's just to pay the remainder of the year. The next one, number 10, $20,000 to increased vehicle maintenance. We're taking out of county inmates. Got a lot of breakdowns, replaced transmission here within the last few weeks, so just costs are going up and breakdowns are going up, too. We haven't got the new vehicles in service yet, and we're trying to keep the rest of the fleet running, too.
I noticed your out-of-county numbers are really going up. That's not going to hurt your budget on that side, is it?
No, fortunately, we haven't really dug into that until here recently, so there's still money in there.
Okay.
Good, dear. Next.
The increased canine expenses. We've got the dogs that, just trying to make it to the end of the year, take care of those.
Okay. That's pretty, pretty self-explanatory. Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, you got one more there?
And the last one is juvenile probation. Shelley? Shelley isn't here. I'll explain hers. She just needs to move money for drug testing because those costs are increasing countywide.
Okay, good. So after considering all these line item transfers, do I hear a motion?
I make the motion to approve the line item transfers as presented.
Second.
Made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the line item transfers as presented by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Got anything else for us, Ms. Kidd?
Yes, sir. You have all received advance information regarding the invoices that we're going to pay in this court. The Auditor's Office has reviewed all of them, and you received a list of payments over $10,000. We recommend paying the bills.
Okay. Does anybody make a motion that we will approve all the bills here in the amount of $552,964.46?
I move that we pay the bills in the amount of $552,964.46.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to pay the bills, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero.
All right, Judge, the last item I have are the financial reports that we've received for the month of June. We have reviewed all these, see no issues, and recommend accepting them. The ones that are not listed here, we either did not receive them or there were issues and they're working on them. And I anticipate them being on the August 24th agenda. We only do these at the second court of the month.
Okay. So except for those two offices, everything else has been received and approved?
And they're all a work in progress, the ones we haven't received. Our offices working diligently with these departments to get the corrections made and updates done.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to be made?
Judge, I'll move that we approve the financial reports that is included.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the financial reports in the various departments, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, now we're down into the miscellaneous. Item number one, discuss and take appropriate action to authorize a county clerk to move an employee from the deputy clerk position in the land and records office at the CS 37 to a deputy clerk in the Court Justice Center position with a step increase in salary to CS 38 because of her experience level and due to a vacating deputy clerk in the Court Justice Center, to be effective Tuesday, July 6, 2021. Ms. Lang.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Yes, exactly as written, I have a clerk that moved out of the court, and so I had a vacancy, and I thought I would move one of my employees from the land office to the court office, and she also has experience in the court office because she worked for me previously, so she's very valuable to me with that experience. She also has experience in the judge's office, working for the judge, so I would appreciate an approved motion.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to authorize a county clerk to move an employee from the deputy clerk position in land and records office at a CS 37 to a deputy clerk in the Court Justice Center position with a step increase in salary to a CS 38.
I second the motion.
Well, retroactive to July 6, 2021.
Yes.
I still second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioners, Judge.
Can we retroactive to July 5?
Retroactive to July 5, 2021.
Thank you.
That's what he meant to say.
I meant that, Phil, it means.
Thank you for catching that one there, Ms. Goine. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Okay, item number two, pursuant to local government code 152.014, take appropriate action for the county judge to draw names for the Salary Grievance Committee from a pool of citizens who served on a grand jury in Hood County during the previous calendar year. So, I've got the names here. This is the second--
Didn't we already do this?
We did, but we did not get sufficient names, am I right?
Right. We had some problems with COVID, and people had to treat--
I was in Groundhog Day.
I guess. I'm up. Do you want me just to number them and then tell you what numbers they are? Yeah, I'll just number them here on the deal, right? So, I have pulled item number one, and then I'm gonna do this, and now I have pulled name number two. Yeah, we can list them. Is that what they're saying? I guess Mr. Mill is here. Three. Let me just do this. We do this, it's probably faster, because it's up to them, Mr. whether they're gonna want to serve anywhere. Was that three?
That was three.
Okay. This is name four. This is name five. This is name six. Name seven. Name eight. Name nine. Name ten.
Don't worry, it's not your name.
Okay, number 11. So, hopefully, oh, hold it.
There's one more.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, and this is name number 12. So, you want to put them all back in here and have them, so. Okay, so I guess you were contact all, and hopefully we got enough for the Salary Grievance Committee now. If not, we will do the same thing the next Commissioners' Court meeting. There you go. Thank you. Okay. Okay, item number three, discuss and take appropriate action to accept $587 of donations from citizens over the Fourth of July weekend and to distribute to the fire prevention budget. Fire Marshal, Mr. Jeff Young.
Judge, Commissioners. So, over the Fourth of July weekend, we had the Unified Command Vehicle out on the square. We had an information table. We had some shirts out there that we were giving away that were donated to us in the first place. There were several people, various people with various donations amounts that just wanted to donate something. They didn't have any that were over 100, so I don't have anybody necessarily to name, but I'd like to take those funds and deposit those into the fire prevention budget.
That's good. Any further discussion? Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to accept the $587 of donations over the Fourth of July weekend and distribute them to the fire prevention budget.
It's made by Commissioner Cotton to accept the $587 of donations from citizens on the Fourth of July weekend and distribute to the fire prevention budgets, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Oh, you're still up here, aren't you?
Yes, sir. One more.
Okay, number four, discuss and take appropriate action to create and integrate a policy for distributing insurance dividend checks for fire departments. Can you explain what we're talking about here?
Yes, sir, so--
Fire Marshal.
This one's kind of a weird one. So, we provide the work comp insurance for the fire departments. We pay the premiums. If they have a low number of claims throughout a year, they get paid a dividend check, basically a reward for not having injuries and sickness and whatnot. So, where the dilemma comes is it's kind of a refund on the premiums that the county pays. Historically, those checks have gone directly to the fire departments as a reward for not having any incidents or sickness, but with us paying the premiums, this being kind of a refund, I just wanted clarity from the court on how you want me to address these, so that there's not any issues. I know this was an issue before, so.
What's the amount?
Here, I've actually got a list of it. It's totaling $5,781.44 in various amounts.
Creston, Decordover Bend Estates, Indian Harbor, Leipan, Station 70, and Tolar. Anywhere from as low as $100 up to $1,927 to Indian Harbor.
You know, a good lawyer could argue either side of this. Number one is that the county pays all the premiums, so if there's a refund, kind of sets the phase that maybe the county should get the money back. On the other hand, it's the individual firefighters at each one of these stations that are actually quote-unquote earning the money because they're the ones that are paying attention, not getting injured, taking care by using the equipment, and thereby earning the premiums. And to me, it kind of looks like, like I said, it's kind of both ways. You can see it either way, nobody would get hurt, but you know, if you take a lot of men that are working together as a team, and they get back one of these dividend checks, you know, they could use that at that fire department. They could buy a new refrigerator. They could buy a new barbecue pit. They could buy a microwave oven. They could buy something that they all could really use and share in, and I think it builds up good morale. And I think that if they know that they're gonna get something by paying attention and practicing good safety and not tearing up the vehicles and coming, you know, I kind of lean towards really rewarding those individuals, and maybe it will catch on to other departments, and maybe after a time when, and those checks are specific, stated which departments--
Yes, sir. Each of those on that list are made out directly to the departments.
Yeah, and as long as, you know, they come in so that Ms. Kidd and Ms. McCoy can keep proper effect, it's no problem in saying that it's a, the income comes in and then it's just going back out to the fire department, is it? That's not a trick.
They're already made out to these fire departments.
Oh, to the fire--
So, we could just send them on to them?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Well, that's just another deal. I mean, I like the transparency, where everybody knows this is money that's coming in, but these guys earned it, in my opinion. They're out there, they're working under stress, they're working under bad condition, and it's enough to kind of reward them with something that they can all use and benefit from, a new barbecue pit, or--
Yes, sir.
--refrigerator, whatever. Do you kind of see that with being a fire guy yourself?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm just in that unique position. I've got to look out for the county and the departments both, so.
Right, so, well, I'm gonna take a stab at it. I move that we allow the fire departments that have earned the refund--
The dividend checks.
--to go ahead and let them send the checks, the county send the checks on to the individual respective fire departments. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Commissioner Andrews. So, we got a motion to let the individual fire departments have their own refunds, seconded by, made by the county judge, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion?
I have one last question.
Yes, sir.
Can I take this then and apply this any other time we get dividend checks for the departments in the future? Because we normally get these annually.
Well, I don't know that we can commit for other courts, in case the other courts don't want to do it.
That's correct. This has to be done each year--
Okay.
--just to protect the future courts.
Okay.
So, the motion will stand as it is. We'll just take, doesn't take that much time, and we can recommend, and I would like to add to my motion, that we send our gratitude to all these firefighters who use such utmost care in their safety, for their personal safety, and for their protection of the equipment. We appreciate that, and all Hood County residents appreciate that. So, with that, all those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, sir.
Tell them that we all appreciate it too. Okay. Okay, item number five, Sheriff, discuss and take appropriate action to seek restitution from Expressway for services billed but not completed in the amount of $1,721.79. Sheriff Deeds.
Judge, Commissioners, it came to our attention that work wasn't being completed, but we were being charged for it, so we turned over a criminal case to the Granbury Police Department since we're the victim, and the restitution amount would be $1,721.79. So, would you like your money back? I guess that's the question.
Yeah, we want, I believe we want our money back, but this doesn't, I don't think, it's separate from exonerating the individual or individuals that--
No, the criminal case--
perpetrated the theft of services against the county, correct?
Correct. The criminal case is still going on. It's being handled by the city of Granbury. So, we're just, they asked me to bring it before the court if we wanted the money back, so I brought it before you.
How do we do this? Do we join the lawsuit, or do we file our own?
No, it's a, you know, criminal case that they're taking care of, and we're the victims of, so would you like restitution back from that company for $1,721.79?
And I understand that the actual owner of the company, who alleges absolutely no knowledge about it, which I can't, he's not on premises on the thing, he just wants to make restitution back to the county.
Correct.
And it still does not exonerate the individuals that are taking that scam against the county. So, in that, I don't think we ever turned down any money that's our money, correct?
Correct.
I think we've canceled that contract with Expressway, haven't we, Glenn? Not doing any more business with them, so, okay.
So, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to accept the $1,721.79 in restitution from Expressway.
Second. Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to accept the restitution amount of $1,721.79, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. All right, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
And then you've got another one up here. Considering, take a-- Oh. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I just knew it was gonna be unanimous, so I was getting ahead of myself. Okay, motion carries five zero. Okay, item number six, consider and take appropriate action to replace the tower at the law enforcement center. Sheriff Deeds.
Judge, Commissioners, we were notified that our tower up there that we've had in place for about 20 years was failing, and it was worse than what we even thought once they got it down. So, that was on the agenda to pay the bills today for that, taking it down and putting up the temporary tower and moving antennas over. Now, the next part of that is to build the new tower and get a new tower replaced up there. So, JTS is a company that did the work to take down the old tower and put up the temporary tower and move the antennas. They are on a DIR state contract, and the total cost for this, 120-foot antenna and everything included in putting it up, is $89,643.92. So, I know this wasn't planned on, but it happened, so.
So, if I can comment, I've been digging pretty deep into this American Rescue Act money, and there may be, we may be able to take money out of that to go to this tower. I don't know if we should do that, if we can do it retroactively, not sure about that, but the tower infrastructure, I think, is something that we can do through that Rescue Act money. I just want to throw that on the table for consideration, that, you know, we may be able to put it out of those funds.
I think that-- Jay Webster commented on that at the last Commissioners' Court meeting and said that we could use those funds for radio system, and this is certainly an emergency that deals with the health and safety of the citizens of Hood County. So, I think we have to have a motion that we're gonna replace the tower and to get the funds, if we can get them out of American Rescue money. If not, we'll have to get them out of some other capital funds, Fund 88 or Fund 10--
Fund 83 or Fund 55.
Okay.
Motion so made.
Okay, so, okay, motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to take appropriate action to replace the tower at the law enforcement center by taking the money from the American Rescue Plan monies, and if that is not allowed, to take it either out of Fund 55--
Or Fund 101.
--or Fund 101, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, item number seven, discuss and take appropriate action to award Lake Granbury Art Association $500 for second place and $500 for third-place winners of the fall open art contest and show. I got one person that wishes to speak on this, Steve Biggers, who is against this motion. Mr. Biggers?
Since you brought this up, Judge, I'd like to hear the reasoning why this should come up, because Commissioners always seem to talk about what they need to do. So, before my time starts, if you would tell us why this is here.
Well, I can tell you why it's here, because I was approached by Mr. Bob Cook, who's one of the leading citizens here, one of our leading artisans in our community, and asked me if Hood County would be willing to contribute something to the Hood County Art Fall Program. The city of Granbury does so, and the amount of money that he wanted, I think that the arts are an important part of our county, and that it, it's really something. In fact, Mr. Cook asked me initially if the county could make a award of $1,000 for first place, and I said that I would be for that, and I would certainly put it on the docket and would bring it up for consideration by the Commissioners' Court, because I thought it was a very worthwhile project. Then, Mr. Cook called me back and said that Ms. Dominique Inge would like to make the first-place award-- Inge would like to make the first place award of $1,000 in memory of her late husband, Mr. Charles Inge, who's a very well-known patron of the arts and of this whole community. And would we still be willing, would the county still be willing to still donate $1,000 for the, in the amount of $500 for the second place and $500 for the third place? And I said I was still in favor of that. I think that is a very worthwhile project and something that should be undertaken by Hood County. So, I put it on the docket and on the agenda here to be discussed for today and to be voted on by the Commissioners. And I've also told Mr. Bob Cook that the award should be named the Hood County Art Award for second place, and then the Hood County Award for third place in the fall open art contest and show.
Thank you. For the life of me, I've looked at this thing, and for the life of me, I do not see how this is county business. You have a friend that called you and said they wanted money. That's what I just heard. So, I think it's rather ironic and hypocritical that we have a workshop last week that says, hey, we have millions of dollars we're gonna get, and let's have nonprofits fill out an application, and we can look at them six ways sideways before we give them any money. But we get a friend that just happens to call and says, hey, I want some money, can we do that, and we'll put your name on it? That's hypocritical. That's absolutely hypocritical. So, what I did was, if you go on the website for the Lake Granbury Art Association, this is a prof, this is a private nonprofit organization. Members have to pay dues to come to this thing. This is how they raise money. The art show, the open all fall art show, that, that's not true. I, I, for 25 years, I was a pretty successful photographer. I've had my own awards in photography, but I can't enter anything into this because no photography allowed. There, there are so many restrictions on this thing, and then to enter something, you have to pay fees. So, people that are wanting to enter something has to pay fees, and they have to be for sale, and then you have to be a member if you want to come to meetings. Then, if they sell the product, the organization gets 15%. This is a nonprofit organization that has so many restrictions on it that they can go out and do what they did for their $1,000, raise money that way, go within the community where people can get tax write-offs. What we did at my church, it's a nonprofit, we had a car club show first of this year, spring of this year. We raised over $1,200 to get awards, to get trophies, to get things like that, people that did donations. It is the same concept that these people can do and not come to the money, to the Hood County money like an ATM, that they just want to withdraw because they're friends with the guy that sits in the center chair. This is the reason that the people in the county are getting fed up, and the winds are changing in this county. People are, people are so upset that the conservative leadership in this county is not conservative. That's why there's probably gonna be a no-confidence vote on you, Judge, next month in the GOP. People are upset, and the GOP leadership has got to change. So, my suggestion with this thing is, you guys vote this thing down, because what nonprofit's gonna come next when I call my friend Dave Eagle, or I call my friend Kevin Andrews, say, hey, my car show, my church is having a car show, I need $1,000 to pay for trophies and to pay for awards. It's opening up the floodgates. Nonprofits need to operate within their nonprofit parameters and not look for the county to be an ATM. This is not county business. If you pass this, I guarantee you, next spring, you're gonna get a motion from me for a thousand bucks for my car show that we have at our church for awards and things like this. People need to do what they're supposed to do with a nonprofit. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Biggers. I want you to know, I want everybody here to know that Bob Cook is a friend of mine, but this is not a favor for Bob Cook. This is going to the fall art show for Hood County, and that's what the award is for. And I'm just one member up here on this commission, and I brought it up here. I think it's a worthwhile project, and if anybody ever has anything else that goes to help out art and people and whatever, I'd be glad to consider anything that somebody has to bring up. So, at that, do I hear a motion to my, a second to my motion to award $500 for second place and $500 for third place?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Cotton. Is there any further discussion?
I've got, I've got just one. Bob Cook is a friend of mine as well, but I can't, I'm persuaded by Mr. Biggers' argument. I think, I'm just saying, I'm not sure that this is tax, should be taxpayer money. Just throwing that on the table.
I agree with Commissioner Eagle. I am concerned with, you know, charity for taxpayer money. I don't-
Anybody else have any, that's the only agenda that anybody, public participation forum. Does anybody have anything else to say? Okay, I call for the vote. All those in favor of Hood County making a contribution to the Lake Granbury Art Association for $500 for second place and $500 for third place for the fall open art contest and show, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it, three to two. All right, number eight, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the petition for the creation of Hood County Emergency Service District, number one.
Yes, sir. Judge, the, the deadline for getting this on for the November ballot is August 16th, and they have asked to put that back on us for an up or down vote for getting that on the ballot for November.
Sorry? Okay, that's- Good morning.
Good morning. An ESD will provide guaranteed funding for today and the future. These guys have done everything, all the legal steps necessary to bring this petition to you. They have, they will, this will provide better and faster service for the people in their fire district only, and only they will have to pay for it. I understand that next year's county budget will bring all county employees up to $15 an hour. I wonder why we're okay with firefighters working for free. I hope that if you deny this petition, you will go on record to inform the public the legal reason why. Thank you.
Okay, Stephen Boynton.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you regarding the citizen's petition to create Hood County Emergency Services District, number one, that was presented to the court back in February of this year. My name is Stephen Boynton. I'm the Assistant Fire Chief of the DCB Act and Volunteer Fire Department, and I am speaking on behalf of the members of our department this morning. We have been discussing the financial needs of the fire departments in the county for a while. The fire chiefs have brought forth their needs, and the county leadership has discussed a bond package and increased funding in the 2022 budget year. After the discussion that was held at the last budget workshop, there's a considerable concern on whether the funding will come to fruition through these two sources for the noted needs and concerns brought forth, forward during these discussions. As you are aware, ESDs are designed to secure funding of local fire, EMS rescue, and other emergency services. This funding is prescribed by the Texas Constitution to be used solely on fire protection and other emergency services within that district. There are currently well over 300 ESDs in Texas, and through this stable funding, many established ESDs have considerably reduced fire and medical response times, allowed local entities to provide enhanced services, thus saving lives, property, and funds for local citizens. The petitioners for Hood County Emergency District, number one, have met all the requirements as prescribed in the Texas Health and Safety Code. A petition signed by at least 100 qualified voters who own taxable real property in the proposed district was filed with the county. Notice was posted and a public hearing was held to consider the petition by the Commissioners Court. If the Commissioners Court finds the creation of the district is feasible and will promote the public safety, welfare, health, and convenience of persons residing in the proposed district, the only thing remaining for the Commissioners Court to do is to grant the petition and call set election. The funding guaranteed by the creation of the ESD will help provide fire protection within the district now and far into the future. You have a very important decision to make that affects all the citizens in the proposed district, and we believe that these citizens should be the ones to decide whether or not they want to create this district. As a taxpaying citizen of this proposed district and an officer on the DCB Act and Volunteer Fire Department with future needs currently unable to be met with the funding provided by the county and the fundraising of the department, I ask that you allow the citizens to vote on the ESD and to die, and to decide for themselves the level of funding for firing EMS in their district. And I want to look each one of you in the eye and say, thank you for considering this. I know it wasn't on your radar probably six months ago, and it's taken up considerable time. We think it's worth it. I want to say thank you for that, and I want to say that clock is very intimidating.
Thank you, Mr. Boynton. Okay, any further discussion by any members of the Commissioners Court, as that's all the public participation forms that were filled out. Is there a motion from any of the Commissioners regarding item number eight?
During, during my campaign, I told these guys that I would vote to put this on the agenda, or on the ballot. So, I'll make that motion.
By Commissioner Andrews to take appropriate action to put the petition for the creation of the Hood County Emergency Service District on the ballot. Is there a second? Hearing no second, the motion fails for lack of a second. Okay, item number nine, consider and take appropriate action regarding Coke Beatty's request to reappoint Christie Massey for a term of two years as trustee for Pecan Valley Centers for Behavior and Developmental Healthcare to serve from September the 1st, 2021, through August the 31st of 2023. There he is, right there, Mr. Coke Beatty, please.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Appreciate y'all reappointing Christie to our board, if y'all would consider doing that. She's been with us since 2005. She never misses a board meeting, and she's a great lady. Everyone knows, knows her and the family, and really does a great job in providing input and accountability for us.
I couldn't agree more. I've attended several of those meetings, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, so-
It's a two-year appointment. That are, we have 11 board members and two ex officio sheriffs on our board as well, Sheriff Deeds and Sheriff West from Somerville, and our board of members rotate off every two years, rotate up every two years, staggered.
Right. Well, I agree that she's a very good member and a very good conscientious, good citizen of Hood County, and so-
She is.
I move that we reappoint Christie Massey for a term of two years as trustee for the Pecan Valley Centers for Behavior and Developmental Healthcare to serve from September the 1st, 2021, through August the 31st of 2023. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
You do a great job also. Okay, this brings us to item number 10. Discuss and take appropriate action to allow Mr. Donald Kelm, who's a really a good guy here, to, who's the District Extension Administrator for the Central District 8 with Texas A&amp;M Agricultural Life Extension Service, to present an agent to Hood County Commissioners Court for hiring as AgriLife Extension Agriculture and Natural Resource Agent, whom he has brought with him and I have met, and I'll tell you one thing, if you're just 10% as good as what Donald say you are, you're gonna be a real good person here for this county, I'll tell you that, okay?
Thank you, Judge. As Judge said, my name's Donald Kelm. I'm the District Extension Administrator for Central District 8, located at Stevenville, which Hood County is one of my counties. Before I present our applicant today, I want to personally again thank the Hood County Commissioners Court for the support in the partnership with Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension to provide programming here in Hood County. Without that support, we wouldn't be able to provide the programming that we do, whether it be ag and natural resources, family community health, or 4H youth development. Also, I, I know several of you have told me, but I want to commend the job that Hannah Hoffman, our new agent that started back in the spring, what she has done during the time of our vacancy with our ag position, a young lady coming in here not knowing much about ag or horticulture or whatever, and she's stood up like a trooper and handled it just like we asked her to. And again, I've been in my administrative role for 14 years, and you forget how quick you lose knowledge base on answering horticulture questions or ag questions or whatever, but I've been over here a couple times making some farm visits, handle a lot of questions on the phone, especially after the freeze and army worms and all kind of stuff like that. So, again, thank you. I just wanted to compliment Hannah on the job she's done, her and Leanne. Our office manager's done super during the vacancy, and again, I appreciate y'all for that support. As you know, we had a vacancy since May in our ag and natural resource position. I visited with Judge and assured him that we would handle things during the vacancy, and we got it open. Dr. Ripley allowed me to get it open very quickly. We had time to set up interviews. We're fortunate to have internal applicant apply for it, as well as another candidate that had been an agent before, so we were super fortunate to have that experience there. Out of the interviews, myself and Hannah and our regional program leader participated in the interviews, and we came out of there with, I think, a super good applicant for our ag and natural resource position, one that's gonna bring internal experience, proven performance, a product of the E wrath County 4H program. Grew up on a farm, both sets of grandparents had dairy farms over there in E wrath County, and wanted to get back to the area, and I told her we could provide her that opportunity to get back to the area. So, today I would like to present London Jones Fair, again, just got married, what, a month, two months ago, London Jones Fair for our ag and natural resource position here in Hood County with a start date of September 1. London comes to us from Burnett County. She's served as agent there for two years. Before that, before graduating, she served as an intern in the Brown County Extension Office there, so that's why I said I was really fortunate to be able to come to you with a proven applicant with proven performance, so.
I agree with you. I agree with you, so.
You want to start the position September 1st, is that right? Okay. Any reason for the delay?
Well, for her to give their, her county, current county, two-week notice and the opportunity to get moved, I was, and, and willing to, being able to get a quality applicant, I was willing to work a couple weeks, and that's why it's September 1.
Good. Well, you're getting close to go back home. I'll tell you one thing, working on a dairy farm, you definitely have a good work ethic, if that's all. You get off zero days per year. Isn't that correct?
Yes, sir.
I bet you can count the number of vacations you and your family took on one hand, can't you, your entire life? So, anyway, would you like to say something? So, anyway, would you like to say something to us, please?
I'm just really thankful for this opportunity. I'm really excited to get in here and get working. I'm excited to work with you and the agriculture areas around here, so.
Well, good. Well, good. Well, we've always had good luck with everybody, and respect what you do, Mr. Kelm. You are always on the ball and always help out Hood County. So, do I hear a motion regarding the hiring of Ms. London Jones Fair? How about that, the London Fair? That's, you didn't plan that, did you?
I did not.
Okay, good. So, do I hear a motion regarding the hiring of London Fair Jones?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion is made by Commissioner Cotton to hire Ms. London Jones Fair as an agent for the Agri-Life Extension Agriculture and Natural Resource Agent, and second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimously, you are hired. We're looking forward to it.
Congratulations.
And thank you again, Mr. Kelm, for bringing her to us, and we look forward to working with you. Ken, are you a great cook?
Yes, sir.
I would like to, Commissioners' Court would like to sample something, everyone.
We can make that happen.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Okay. Okay, item number 11, discuss and take appropriate action to approve paid quarantine leave for peace officers and detention officers policy. Mr. Olet.
Good morning.
We'll let you speak first, Ms. Welburn, okay? Ms. Welburn.
Well, I believe you received this policy that was, I've worked up probably about two weeks ago. Also, it's in regards to House Bill 2037 that was passed, or 2073, I apologize, that was passed back in May. In the policy, or the House bill, it states that we do have to create a policy in regards to this. I ran it by our county attorney. He looked over the policy and gave his kudos to it, so it's here for your approval.
I think this is, we have to do this, don't we? I mean.
We do.
So, that's pretty much what the, it's pretty straightforward, isn't it? Okay? Any further discussions? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the paid quarantine leave for peace officers and detention officers policy.
Second. Second. Our motion is made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the paid quarantine leave for peace officers and detention officers policy, second by Commissioner Andrews. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number 12, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the Hood County judge to sign the renewal of the Care Flight contract effective August 1st, 2021, through July 31st, 2022.
Yes, sir.
I don't see Commissioner, I mean, County Attorney Matt Mills, but has he looked at that? Is it the same contract?
It is the same contract that we have had ever since we put Care Flight in place here. Nothing changed. It's staying the same amount of money, $12 per employee. This is all full-time and part-time employees that is enrolled in this program, and it's just brought each year to the court for renewal and for the county judge to sign, and we have 320 employees that we will renew August 1st.
All right. Any further discussion? Is there a motion from the Commissioner?
I move that we authorize the Hood County judge to sign the renewal of the certificate contract effective August 1st, 2021, through July 31st, 2022.
Yeah, the Care Flight contract.
Care Flight.
Thank you.
Motion is made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the county judge to sign the renewal of the Care Flight contract effective August 1st, 2021, through July 31st, 2022, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Okay. Item number 13, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the Hood County judge to sign the renewal of the master service agreement with assurance medical for the 2021-2022 year to conduct random drug testing for Hood County's commercial driver license drivers, CDL drivers, right?
That is correct. They conduct the random testing that we do to our Road and Bridge drivers, our equipment operators. We do it quarterly, and they process the draw for each driver, and then they contact me with the list, and then I get in touch with Road and Bridge and get everything set up. They, they show up around 6:30 a.m. and do the testing.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
See, I'll prove that, I'll make the motion to approve the Hood County judge to sign the renewal of the master services agreement with assurance medical for the 2021-22 year to conduct random drug testing for Hood County CDL drivers.
Second. Okay. Motion is made by Commissioner Cotton to, well, the Hood County judge to sign the renewal of the master service agreement with assurance medical to conduct the random drug testing for Hood County CDL drivers from 2021 to 2022, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Next.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Welburn. Next, item number 14, consider and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign and approve the request of purchasing to enter into an interlocal cooperative purchasing agreement with Henderson County to piggyback on their contract with L3 Harris. Mr. Glenn Tillman.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Yes, this is just a simple interlocal contract between us and Henderson County that would satisfy the competitive bidding requirements to purchase on their trunking system contract with L3 Harris, should the court decide to do that. It has been reviewed by Henderson County's judge and county attorney, and it's actually also on their Commissioners' Court agenda for August 3rd.
Our county attorneys looked at it also?
Yes.
And that will save us significant money here in Hood County, won't it?
Yeah, it's, it's, it'll save a lot on the process and.
Okay. So, everybody's in agreement, okay. Do I hear a motion from any of the Commissioners regarding the cooperative purchasing agreement?
I move that we authorize the county judge to sign and approve requests for purchasing to enter into a low, interlocal cooperative purchasing agreement with Henderson County to piggyback on their contract with L3 Harris.
Second. By Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Eagle, to approve the piggyback contract interlocal cooperative purchasing in Riverdale County. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. All right, this brings us to the last item. Consider and take appropriate action to approve request of purchasing and facility maintenance to not renew RFP 2020-006 and put out forbid RFP 2021-010, inspection, maintenance, and monitoring of fire prevention equipment and services. Mr. Glenn Tillman.
Yes, it's renewal time on this contract for fire monitoring and prevention services. We have a contract with Fire and Life Safety America, and I know facility maintenance has had issues with them since that contract began next year, and they've requested that we not renew that and put that out for, for a rebid.
Okay, we have, Mr. Jay Riley.
Yes, sir. We, we bid this out. We went through the process. They were the low bidder. We accepted that low bid, but after we accepted the low bid and we started working with them and we were against time constraints, they said they didn't understand that there was monitoring involved. And I said, well, yeah, it says it right on the, everything on it. So, anyway, long story short, didn't want to put the county at jeopardy, so we continued to let the previous company do the monitoring, and it was not a lot. And so, we did that, but it kind of went against my grain that they won the bid and didn't stick to it. We had a couple of small issues, and they corrected them, but it was on the, the pricing of service. We got that corrected, but I was just a little bit put out that I didn't feel like they fully understood what they were bidding on, so I thought we'll try it again.
So, there's other companies out there that do that same thing that we're gonna be able to reach out to?
Yes, sir. There's several companies out there. I'll work with Glenn, and, and we'll, we'll make sure they all get packages, and they all understand. We thought we had, but.
Pretty straightforward, I agree, so.
Yeah.
What we want, you're just asking for us to approve the request for purchasing and you to work together to get somebody else in this re-roll.
Right.
Right. I hear a motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to not renew RFP 2020-006 and put out forbid RFP 2021-010, inspection and maintenance and monitoring of our fire protection equipment services.
Second. All right. Motion is made by Commissioner Cotton, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
That ends this Commissioners' Court's meeting. Thank y'all all very much for attending.